States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indelible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you and welcome, everybody. We will start. The first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda, so I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as posted and sent to the News Media 24 prior to the meeting.
Bill Mood.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Hodge. Second by Mr. Davies. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is the leadership statement. The City of Hampton endeavors at all times to promote and model the principle of professionalism, trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting this evening's meeting, we expect that all our participants will act in a respectful manner, consistent with these principles. Thank you. Next item is the South Council Workshop Report from Monday, April 21st. I won't read it for you for obvious reasons, but it is available online if anybody would like to review that. The next item we have for is public comment. So I'd ask for anybody for a public comment tonight.
Mayor, just a clarification. Would that be in regards to anything with the dog?
There's a special, there's another spot for that.
Okay.
I'd rather keep that separate.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, now hearing any public comment, we will move on. We have a public hearing on the adoption of the fiscal year 2026 budget. So being the time and place for the public hearing and regardance to the adoption of the fiscal 2026 budget, I, Mayor Burtzle, will open the hearing at 6:03 PM. Ron Dunn, City Manager, will review the details.
Thank you, Mayor. In front of you, you have the full budget pages that will be submitted to the county and the state. The front page is the notice of public hearing. The estimated total tax levy rate is proposed to be $15.91 per thousand. This budget shows a total revenues of $9,395,665 and total expenditures $9,216,923. Are there any questions?
Any questions on the budget?
And public comment.
So there was no written objections, so if there's any other public comment on the budget at this point? Hearing none. That is a zero. So at that, we can close the public hearing at 6:05 PM. Thank you. Next item, we have a vicious animal hearing involving a dog owned by Cody and Haley Anderson and declared vicious by his priest chief on April 15th, 2025. And prior to get started, I think Mr. Davies has a comment that he would like to make.
Yes, I want to state for the record, I will not be participating in the discussion and I will be abstaining on any vote taken for this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Chief Morrison, would you like to get us briefed on this?
Yes, in reference to the dog owned by Cody and Haley Anderson, on Monday, April 14th, it was reported to the Hampton Police Department that Wendy Boozman's dog Luna had been attacked by another dog. Wendy reported that she was walking her dog past the Anderson residence, 2317th Avenue Northeast. On Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, at approximately 6:00 PM, when she stopped on the road to talk to Cody Anderson, Wendy advised her dog went up and smelled Cody, then walked back behind her on the street. Cody's dog was running loose in the yard when it came out from behind the house and attacked Luna, biting down and picking it up by the midsection, thrashing it around. Luna was taken to the Hampton Vet Center where underwent surgery repairing its wounds. Photos of Luna's injuries are included in your packet tonight. The Anderson dog is described as a three-year-old male golden retriever named Sullivan. Cody Anderson said Ms. Boozman stopped at the end of the driveway for a conversation. Boozman's dog walked onto the driveway, Cody bent over to pet the dog, Cody's dog Sullivan walked down, eventually crossed the line of the electric fence, underground fence, and the fight ensued. Due to the nature of the incident and the severity of the injuries, it was found the dog exhibited vicious propensities and should go before the council for a hearing. Hampton City Code states that any dog that has been found to possess such vicious propensities by the council after a hearing may be deemed vicious and ordered removed by the city or humanely destroyed. Any questions? Otherwise, I think they'll both speak on their behalf.
Chief, and maybe this is a question for, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Maybe this is a question for somebody else. How many feet past this electric underground fence were they standing? Was it 10 feet, 15 feet, 3 feet?
The only thing I, what I understand is they were at the foot of his driveway, right next to the curb. I don't know how far past the dog was in the electric fence. Cody will be able to answer that, I'm sure.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Phil?
I had a question for the chief. Thank you. When you served the notice to the Anderson's home, was the dog in question, present when you served the notice?
I did not serve the notice myself. Officer Kelly did, I believe. Was it? One of our officers did. It wasn't me.
So you don't know if the dog was present at that time?
No, I do not.
Okay. Okay. In the past, I understand the dog is three years old. Has, in the past three years, has there been any reports of vicious behavior by this dog for me?
We have, I checked back and we have had no concerns reported to us about this dog, no incidents reported to us about this dog.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other questions for Chief Morrison at this point? Not? Is Ms. Boozman here? Is she here?
Yes.
All right. There she is, hiding in the back there.
I think everyone received my initial write-up, including with pictures. I have a few extra pictures and I'll tell you why in my statement. Good evening. My name is Wendy Boozman and I'm here today because my dog was attacked by another dog, a golden retriever owned by Cody and Haley Anderson. On Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, I set out for my residence at approximately 5:45 PM for a walk with my dog, as I usually do. My dog, in the write-up, I said she was 17 pounds. I forgot that the vet weighed her with the blanket I had her in when I brought her in. So she's a 15 pounds, so I have a correction. She's 15 pounds and she's a multiple. We were walking down 17th Avenue Northeast when I saw Cody outside his residence. I stopped at the end of his driveway and chatted with him for a few minutes. My dog Luna was on a six-foot leash and she went towards Cody to greet him. I stayed in the street the whole time, so she had a six-foot leeway to go see him. I called Luna back, I'm sorry, chatted for a few minutes. My dog Luna was on a six-foot leash and went towards Cody to greet him. I called Luna back to me where she stood beside me then in the street. And he did bend down to try to pet her, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, too. It was at this time that Sullivan, a golden retriever, and the Anderson family dog, he came running around the east side of their house with a toy in his mouth. And I said to Cody, "We had better go because your dog will not like us here." Cody responded, "It was okay" because he had an underground fence and that the dog couldn't come out that far. Cody was standing in his driveway, just behind where his mailbox is located. We were not on the property when the incident occurred. We were standing in the street and the dog came running from around the east side of the house and then the dog suddenly attacked my dog without provocation and I yelled, "Get your dog!" Maybe a little bit more frantic than that, as all I could hear was my dog screaming out in pain. The injuries were severe. The dog was thrashing our much smaller dog in its mouth until the owner, Cody, tackled it to release her. I quickly scooped up Luna and told Cody that her walk was over and that I had to get home. Now, the law does not require, always require, a history of violence. One serious, unprovoked attack can be enough to label a dog as vicious. A vicious act is defined by the behavior during the incident, not by the dog's past. A first offense can still pose an unacceptable danger to others. Vicious behavior is not excused by property lines. Luna was not aggressive, she did not pose a threat, and she was leashed. The Anderson family is claiming that Sullivan was just protecting the property, but a dog cannot maul another dog without justification. There was no threat to the owner's safety. The smaller dog, mine, was not approaching the owner aggressively, nor was she barking. So I'm sorry, some of the letters that were sent said that he was harmless. I'm sorry, your dog is no longer a harmless dog. My dog suffered extreme wounds as the dog ripped back a large portion of skin off her back, exposing down to the muscle. To date, our family dog has been through two surgeries, dozens of stitches, daily medications, and is still recovering physically, let alone mentally, from this incident. This wasn't just a minor scuffle. Our dog has been in severe pain for two weeks now, unable to even walk or move for several days. The bill for her medical treatment is mounting and emotionally, it's been incredibly difficult for our family. Luna is looking at more revisionary surgery in the future to remove tissue that might be dead if it dies. Dr. Vosberg said that additional surgery is normal for a dog with this much damage. After the incident, our primary focus was on the care of Luna. In the days following, I was highly encouraged to report the incident by many community members to ensure it was on record to prevent future issues with this dog, to the point that many were upset and angry with me with any indication that it wouldn't be reported. It was a concerned member of the community that contacted the police, who then came to our houses for a statement on April 12th. That was the first time I was contacted by a police department member, and it was Officer Kelly. Our dog is incredibly sweet, timid, and gentle. She has never shown aggression or any provocation toward another dog or person. Anyone who's met my dog can attest that she's nothing but gentle and non-confrontational for a dog. She doesn't even like her head petted, and so she cowers away when someone reaches for her head. And you'll hear Cody say that she ducked. It's because she doesn't like anybody putting a hand towards her head. She never makes a peep or growl or makes any sort of noises when you pet her. I understand the owners have letters from family and friends saying their dog is usually friendly, especially to people. However, this shouldn't minimize the harm this dog caused to another animal. A dog that causes this level of harm is, at the very least, unpredictable, and that is a public safety issue. I'm not here because of a personal vendetta. I'm here because I believe no one should go through what we had to go through. Clearly, the current methods of containing the dog to the owner's property are not working as the dog crossed the underground fence to attack. I understand additional safety measures have been implemented in the two weeks since the attack, but this dog needs to be kept behind secure fencing and given additional training and security measures to keep our neighborhood safe and accessible for other families and pets in the neighborhood. I no longer feel safe walking in front of their house and I'm still traumatized by the event. I do also have a little statement from Dr. Vosberg. I just have all the records, so if anybody needs to see this, I can pass it up there. Original emergency call was made on the 4th of April, 2025, at 6:13 PM. He said he talked to the owner and saw the dog around 6:30 PM at the vet clinic. He has his name signed, his signature here. At 8:41, when he was finally done with all the surgery and everything, he updated in his records, and you can see it here. He has big dog, little dog fight, large degloving injury over both shoulder blades, laterally to the level of the heart girth, forward to scuff of neck, placed drain tubing along both lateral wounds, sutured in place, used three, four packs of 2-0 suture in simple, interrupted fashion, fully one-third of the body skin was affected. May well need to sew up wound again as it heals up and remodels. Recheck dog in seven to 10 days. I took her back out there on Good Friday. Things were looking okay, but then things kind of turned to the worse on the 22nd of April, which was then Tuesday. She had to go back out there and have an additional surgery. And so that is new since I put the thing in on Monday. This happened on Tuesday at 9:35 AM. The wound less than half the size of original injury, anyway. They had to sedate her again, clean it out, refix everything. She came out of anesthesia better because, as you said, the first time she was in such shock from what had happened to her. Recheck is needed, so it's not over. Her vet bills are not over and I don't know how long this is going to last. And I hope that this unfortunate situation has just brought awareness to other dog owners so that something like this never happens again. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Wendy. Any other like to speak on the part of that dog? If not, we will move on to Sullivan, is it? So does anybody like to speak up with them?
I'm not very well spoken, so I apologize.
You're Cody, correct?
Yep.
Okay, Cody Anderson. Okay. That's what I'm making.
I just wanted to apologize for anything that my dog has caused. We are doing everything we can to atone for the situation. In fact, on Sunday, my house will be going up for sale. And I just apologize to anybody. I stopped everything as quick as I could. He has never tried to, we see dogs every day walking by the house and has never had an incident trying to get outside of, to get anybody. And other than that, that's all I have. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Let's taste your name for us.
Hello, my name is McKenna Waddingham and I am Cody's sister. I just want to say, I've written my statement, so you guys have probably seen that. And I just kind of wanted to reiterate today that Sully has played with my two dogs multiple times in the past and has not had any sort of aggression. He is such an amazing family dog and is the best companion to his little sister Drew. And I am just extremely disappointed by the actions of the council members in this situation and how some of the things have been handled. And I hope today you're able to witness how many people are here in support of Sully. And he's just a very well-loved dog and we hope you guys can see that today. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Amber Anderson. I am Cody's mom. I am also not very well-spoken or good at speaking in front of people. He must have got that from me. I presented my statement. I kind of wanted to go through just a little bit of that. I've been with Sully. Sully's actually four, if I'm not mistaken. I think they had him at St. Louis, but he is four and never had an issue. He does play continuously. I have Saint Bernards, so I have bigger dogs, but he does, an Australian Shepherd, he comes out, they run, they play. He's played with my neighbor's golden retriever. I live outside of town, so I live in the country, so they're free to kind of run. Never had an incident. We have people in and out of the farm quite frequently. I, you know, never had any problems with him as that. I do watch him once in a while. Once in a while, I watch them, watch their dogs when, they live in town. They used to live over kind of by South Side Trails is their first house where I watched Sully one of the last times. And as we were on a walk, I had Sully and Ziva, because their other little dog, they have a small dog also. We were walking by, I believe it's the Abbas house, and they had dogs that actually were free and loose in their yard and ran out to us and were, you know, kind of, not, I don't want to say growling, but, you know, kind of jumping hyper. Sully didn't react. It's really unfortunate. Dogs, unfortunately, are dogs. You know, I mean, you don't know, was it when he crossed the line, towards the line, did he get zapped? Could that have caused him to act out? Was he worried about Cody with the dog running at him? Dogs don't know size. He doesn't know that dog's not a threat. You know? I really do, and as he said, they are making adjustments. They moved his fencing back. They were willing to actually put in a full, large fence, except now they're looking at listing the house for sale. They have a few houses they're going to be looking at. Just, I think, how this was handled in general has just left a bad taste for them wanting to be a resident of the community. There was some backlash in the paper, articles written that, without anybody even talking to them, that just shouldn't have happened, you know? It just was not a good situation. But unfortunately, dogs are dogs. We'll never really know what happened. We can't ask them. If you were to meet Sully, if I was to bring him in here now, he'd run up to you with his toy, happy as can be. He's around my three-year-old granddaughter and my other two-year-old granddaughter constantly. Let, I mean, run around, play, no issues. You know, he was in his yard. I do think, you know, dogs are protective. I know if a strange dog were to come into my yard, my dogs would be protective, unfortunately. That's how mine have been trained. You know, it's an unfortunate situation. I feel bad for what happened, but as I said, dogs are dogs, but he is a family pet. I think anything that was required would be done to be able to keep him at home with his family where he belongs because he's very loved. We are those people that do birthday parties and stuff for our dogs. I mean, they are our babies. If any of you have me on Facebook, you will see like 500 pictures of my Saint Bernards all the time. Sully is part of our family and we don't want to lose him. So thank you for your time and thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on behalf of Sully?
Hi, I'm Debbie Meyer. I'm Cody's grandma. I've watched Sully many times, babysat with him. I've never had a problem with him. He's a good dog. He's been really good with family. He's been really good with extended family. He's been good with friends that come over. I've been to events to their house and Sully's been there and not once has he ever even acted aggressive or upset or anything. He just likes to play with everybody. He loves children. I just want you to know that he is definitely a family member and we love him and we hope that we are able to keep him. I think it's very unfortunate what happened and I'm really sorry to the owner of the other dog. It's horrible, but like Amber said, you don't know about dogs. I walk my dog and if she sees anybody even coming close to us, she has to stop and bark at him because she's protecting me. And she's also had to protect our other dog, Tico, because we've had dogs come out after us three times from one house, which I did talk to the police officer, two times from another one. It's just, you just don't know how they're going to react when there's a family member involved. If they think, "This is their property. What are you doing here? What are you doing to my owner?" I just want you to know, we love Sully and I just never, never seen him like this, ever.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else from the Sully family?
Hi, I'm Chris MacArthur and I'm Cody's grandmother. And I just wanted to let you know that Sully is really good with everybody. On Drew's second birthday, there was over 30 people in Cody and Haley's house and that dog, when we were getting there, would go and meet everybody and walk them to the door and they would go in and then he would go get the next person. He just loves everybody. And while the party was going on, he was in the house with everybody. I'm sure there was like 30 people there and six or seven kids. And he was just walking through everybody. There was a lot of commotion going on. You know how it is when kids are opening birthday presents. And Sully was not affected at all. He played with everybody. He went to everybody and wanted to get petted. He wanted you to throw his toy, which was really difficult with all the people there, but he's a very good dog and, yeah, I am also sorry for the other dog. But like she said, you don't know what the dog is thinking. And to me, it might have been that zap, you know, freaked him out, but he does not deserve to die for this. And whatever we can do to make Sully stay alive and live his happy life, we are willing to do, all of us as a family. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else with the family? Yes, if not, I would ask the council if you guys have any questions for the family either way.
I do.
Chair, Mr. Green.
I have questions for both Wendy and Cody. Wendy, you did mention that you were involved with your dog's care, therefore it took you that long to make a report. That six-day delay kind of concerns me. And then why did Councilman Davies make the report and not you?
It's really hard when you live in a close, little neighborhood. When Cody was my son's side liner, big buddy, or whatever you want to say. Rick Shaw was close by me, just around the corner. You know, we have friendry relations. I've known Cody for a long time and so it's really hard. I didn't know what to do in that instance. You know, do I, don't I? Plus, I was so consumed right away with Luna's care that I wasn't even thinking about the other dog, to tell you the truth. I just wanted to focus on Luna. The first few days were kind of touchy. I'm sorry if I get emotional because I'm thinking back on it. You know, and the thing is too, I don't want to see a dog put down. And Cody even had said, "Maybe I need to put him down." And I said, "Let's not do rash because right now I'm in trauma mode right now. I'm in shock. You are too. Let's just wait. Let's just wait and see a minute." So that was one of the things that delayed me. And then I had somebody come over to my house two days later, and I'm like, a lady that lives two blocks away, whatever, friend of the family, and, and she's like, "Oh, I heard about Luna. I gotta see her." And I'm like, "How did you hear?" "Oh, I heard it from so-and-so that heard it from so-and-so at coffee." And I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, it's a small town." So, you know, I didn't know what to do at that point. I was, I didn't know. And I did go to Councilwoman Davies, because I know he's on the council, and I said, "Hey, what should I do?" You know, is this something that, as a citizen, I do need to report? Will the vet report it? I wasn't even sure if the vet did, you know, since, yeah, I don't, you know, since he took care of her. I wasn't sure if Dr. Vosberg would, is he a mandatory reporter like we are at school? I'm not sure. You know, I've never had this happen before. So, actually, I wasn't sure what to do. So, I talked with Councilwoman Davies, and he's like, "No, any dog that is, you know, vicious or something like that, it probably needs to be, needs to be done." At that point, he had the police officers' contact information and things like that. So, because I was still pretty distraught over everything, even just talking about her. I couldn't even get through a sentence. So, anyway, but they first came into my house on, it was prom, prom afternoon of the 12th is when the first initial contact was made. I even felt like, and I know Cody gave me his number and stuff, but I even, I just was so traumat-- I just couldn't even reach out to him either. I just, I, the conflict, you know, I don't do well with conflict. And that even just bothered me to just disturb things up like that. And so, anyway, that's kind of why. Another thing I did want to point out is that the dog never saw my dog on the property. The dog was behind the house. So, when they say the dog was protecting him, the dog didn't even see my dog by Cody. And then when he came running around and dashed into the street, there was, there was no point, no time for him to even sniff if my dog had touched Cody or not. So, there's a few things there that I wanted to clarify a little bit about that. And I do have a couple of statements from people about my dog, my dog's demeanor, if you need that. I do have those statements. Any other questions? Does that, does that answer your question?
I appreciate you clarifying the time with the vet as well.
Yes, and--
There seemed to be a--
Discrepancy. And I also have the time on my phone. I could go back, and I can show you on my phone the initial contact I made to the emergency number, and then when he finally called me. There was about, maybe about a five-minute delay in that, because I had to go to voicemail on the emergency hotline on that. Okay? Is that it?
Could I ask, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm wondering if Zach, the veterinarian, gave you any indication of, you know, he could have been anywhere other than Hampton, Iowa, to meet you in 15 or 20 minutes out of the vet center. Did he give you any indication of what would have happened if he wouldn't have been there?
He did not. It was the 15-minute delay because he had just gotten home. And he was actually just taking off his boots. In fact, I texted his wife, because I have his wife's number, and I said, "Do they answer the emergency number? Because I really have a problem, I think." I'm not sure if I should bring her out, because at that point, I didn't know how bad it was. Yeah, I didn't know.
Because I mean, there's a lot, looks to me like a lot of blood loss here.
Yeah. He said, though, because of that, it was kind of, the skin was, yeah. If you look at the, the one where it's really peeled back, you have that one right there. And what he did, he pumped her really full of fluids and stuff, and what he's worried about now is the infection sitting in, because it was opened up all the way. That's what he's really worried about. And yeah, so. But I, no, I didn't know. Your, your initial question--
I was curious--
Was, I'm sorry.
Actually, I'll just come right, I'll say it. How close to death was your dog?
I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe she was, at that point, she was in shock, in shock. But luckily, none of the, and he's like, "I can't believe none of the vital organs were, were affected." So, that was a good thing. It was just this, this skin and everything like that, the muscle and stuff. But anyway, but, and in fact, I even sent her down on the way home, because I wanted to see if she could even walk yet and stuff. And I think we're both, we didn't even know, you know, we're just shocked. Like I said, it looked like there was gashes, but I didn't know until we got out there, and then he quickly sedated her. And he said, "Oh, my, this is, this is worse than I thought," with, with the picture.
This dog, and I don't want to hold the pictures up because--
Yeah, they're pretty graphic.
This is a drain tube or a--
There are two drain tubes in her.
Okay.
And I do have a recent picture from Tuesday's, Tuesday's visit, the second surgery. She is healing up more on the sides, but the problem is it keeps splitting open. Now, I have a collar around her or a foam, you know, so she doesn't scratch and pick at it. So, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna take a long time for her to get back to where she was, I'm hoping. I did purchase a stroller for her, because I am scared to death now for any dog.
I don't blame you. I don't believe that that dog is going to want to go outside. I mean, I could envision this kind of trauma. The dog wouldn't, would probably just start going to the bathroom in the house, because it's scared to be outside. I may have a question later, but I'll--
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Boozman? Wonder if I could ask a question?
Oh, sorry.
I want you to know that this is a heartbreaking situation for everybody--
It is. It really is. I'm just--
Even for everybody in the council, it's a heartbreaking situation. But I have some questions for you. You said that, why, I should ask. When you take your dog for the walk, do you normally go on the same patterns?
The same route all the time.
So, you've passed--
A lot of times. Usually, I go on the opposite side of the street. And I thought, "Why of all days did I stop and talk to Cody?" I mean, it was just, we hadn't seen each other all winter, you know? It's just that friendly banter of, of neighbors. And, and I was just, you know, we're just talking about his dog, actually, and his, and his daughter and things like that. And, because normally, I go on the opposite side, so, with any dogs. Because actually, on my route, there's a few dogs that have fence line. And this is what I want to bring awareness to, is there's another house around the corner that they have an invisible fence, but they don't put the collar on the dog. People got to understand, you've got to take care of your dogs.
Yes, that's, that's true. My next question would be, on these walks, when you've passed the house in previous times, has Sullivan ever been outside in that, that was--
Oh, yes, yes. He's outside a lot, because he likes to play. He has a toy usually in his mouth, zipping back and forth. But he's never, and I don't know why he did. It is so strange. Why, why he came? And he shot at us like, like a bullet, like, like, like he was chasing a squirrel or something. And I don't know why. He has never, never, and I've walked by his house so many times.
Okay, I have one more question for you, and I don't want you to take this the wrong way. I just have the question.
Sure.
You had mentioned in your response that you said to Cody, "We had better go, because your dog will not like us here." And I'm just wondering why that statement, if there's never been a problem in the past?
Because I was at the end of his driveway, and normally, I am across the street when I'm walking Luna. That we were that close, you know, to, I mean, we were, okay. So, the end of the driveway, there's a mailbox here. Cody was standing here. The dog came around the house, shot here, went to the middle of the driveway, and came right, rushed right past me. And I turned around thinking, "Oh, he's going to sniff noses or whatever," you know? I wasn't even thinking about the fence, and it, he just latched onto her.
Okay.
And that's, yeah. So, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Lamos?
Cody, where's, where's your dog now? Did they quarantine him because the rabies vaccine was out of date? Thank you.
I have some questions for Cody.
Step up here, yeah, so we can hear you better.
My number-one question is, why wasn't Sully registered with the city, and why weren't his vaccinations current?
The vaccination thing was, we flipped the two dogs around. That was just an accident. The registration, I didn't know was a thing, but we have gotten that taken care of as well.
And the, the timeframe. Wendy said 6:30. She was out at the vet. You said you went to her house at 7:30, and the dog was at the door and barked at you.
Timing could have been whatever, but I, after I got Sully inside, I took a shower, talked to my wife, and I went over to the house and just checked on things. Timing is exactly, I'm not sure. I would say probably a half hour.
That was confusing.
Okay. I would say half an hour between the incident and--
Are you going to be paying the vet bill?
I offered to, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And can you guarantee that something like this will never happen again?
Yes. We, before the police report was filed, we already had bids to put a physical fence in. We did scale back the in-ground fence just in the meantime, but we do have a quote that we accepted to do the physical fence. But I, like I said before, I think we're possibly going to relocate.
So, you were going to put in a fence, and now because you're going to put your house up for sale, you're not going to put in a physical fence. So, how do we know that--
I will still put in the physical fence in the meantime, if necessary, yep.
So, you're going to proceed with the fence?
Proceed with the fence.
And, you know, as your family member said, you just don't know about dogs. Dogs will be dogs, and you don't know what triggers them or what's going to happen. So, I'm, I'm just curious at how you can guarantee that he won't react like this again?
Training, physical fence with the collar and the in-ground fence, I don't see how it-- He wouldn't, because our house is facing a, the tree field. There's no, there's no people back there that he would even see.
But the invisible fence didn't stop him. So, I, so I, you know, moving that, I don't think it's going to make any difference, in my personal opinion. And I also feel that, once a dog has done something like this, you can never trust him again. I don't know how you can. Well, you just said, "Dogs will be dogs, and you don't know what's going to trigger them or what they're going to do." Speaking to Cody.
That's Cody's--
That's a question.
Cody has the floor.
What's the question?
I was just, I was just sharing you with my opinion. I do feel strongly that if a dog does this once, you never know, is he going to do it again? And what's going to trigger him, and how bad it's going to be? Sure, I, it is difficult. It's very difficult. He's a member of your family, and you love him dearly, obviously. Is there a way he can be removed from the city limits?
I'm sure I can make that arrangement.
You have that choice. You know, if we do deem him vicious, you have that choice to remove him or have him euthanized. Thank you.
Ms. Lamos?
Cody, if, if we decide to make the dog, deem the dog vicious, I'm going to tell you that the city is more or less a mandatory reporter to other communities. If you decide to move to Latimer, Colter, Sheffield, Mason City, we tell those police departments that this is a vicious dog.
I understand.
And so, you may have problems with that. I-- I'm under a real conflict here. I look at these pictures, and they are heartbreaking. The only way I would negotiate at all on this is if you agreed to put up a physical fence and-- and the invisible fence, I don't think they work, but that's just my opinion too. And I would like some input from, from Wendy on this as well. I know it's not her job to give it. But these people that just let their dogs run in the yard, I, I don't understand it. I get complaints all the time. And it just baffles me. You don't care about your animal that much to put it on a damn leash? I don't get that. I don't. And it, I mean, we, we had our basset hounds on leashes every day of their life, and a mailman got spooked and maced our basset hounds. And it affected them for the rest of their lives, trusting the mailman of all people, you know? And a mailman get bit all the time, too. I know. We had one in the south part of town chase the mail lady for two blocks, and then the post office says, "You're moving your mailboxes onto the parking, and we're not delivering to your house anymore for a whole two-block area." The only negotiation point I would have on this whole thing without just deeming the dog vicious right off and giving it a warning would be if you put up a fence, and Wendy said that was okay or thought that would work. I know you guys are acquaintances and, and, you know--
Yeah.
Neighborly.
It's heartbreaking.
It is, and it's heartbreaking for you, and we're not picking on you, Cody.
I know.
It's damn tough.
My wife couldn't even be here tonight. I just, I'm so sorry.
It's all right. But that's, that's where I'm at.
I will do whatever it takes.
Because we don't want to see you leave town. You're good for Hampton.
Thank you.
Just put up a damn fence.
I'll, yeah, whatever needs happen.
If that's, I see Wendy shaking her head back there, so.
I think if you, if you put a fence up, you should still find a place for him outside of town, because you can't get a fence put up overnight.
Right, yeah. If he could stay with Grandma for a week or two, until we get this fence put up, I'd--
And then--
What about a ground stake with a leash in the back, six-foot?
No, because the leashes, dogs break leashes.
I was just wondering.
With the post office person, that's what happened there.
Correct.
The leash broke. It chased the postal worker. She tripped and fell. And supposedly, they had an invisible fence too.
I have a question for you, Cody.
Okay.
Before I ask this question, I just, I would like Ms. Boozman to know that even if you didn't report it, it should have been reported by somebody, whether it was another council member or a neighbor or somebody, because you never know in situations like this what a future outcome might bring. So, any type of situation like this needs to be reported, so I'm glad it was reported. And Cody, I just had one question for you. This time of year especially, with so many people and the nice weather out walking their dogs. And I'm sure there's a lot of new dogs in your neighborhood, just people are trying to get their dogs some exercise. And so, Sullivan has seen a lot of strange people probably walk past that house. Can you recall any instances where he was agitated with a stranger that came up to say hi to you at the mailbox?
Oh, never. So, he can actually see, I counted eight dogs from his perimeter, and he's never once tried, and not once ever has tried to leave to do any harm to people or animals. I'm at a loss for words, because it's just a horrible thing that I never thought would happen.
No, no, it's a freak thing. Everybody, nobody wants it to happen, but--
But, yeah, yeah, no, he's never, never had any issue.
Okay, thank you, Cody.
Ms. Lamos?
You know, it's like everyone said, you don't know what a dog's thinking any more than a person on crack.
Sure.
You know, the dog was playing with a toy in the beginning, right?
Yeah, he always--
So, he probably wanted to play with Wendy's dog, or, you know, you just don't know what a dog's thinking.
I don't know. It's horrible.
Any other questions for either of the parties? Hearing that, I just wanted to add that, you know, that my thoughts are with both of you families, because I love doggers, dogs. I've had rescues my whole life. My last one I put down a little over two years ago, and, and they're part of your family, and I know that. So, whatever, however this comes out tonight, just know that we, we're not, we're not doing this to hurt anybody. We just need to follow the law. All right? All right. Any other questions at all? Any other discussion? All right, you can sit down if you'd like. So toward that point, I'm going to give you two options here before we make an emotion. Can you choose either one, and we can go with that? I would entertain a motion, number one, to declare the dog in question as non-vicious with the incident documented as a first report of an unprovoked attack on record. And I think we would like to add in there also about installing the, the physical fence to the backyard. Or the option, yes.
I would like to also insert the dog be removed until that fence is in place.
Okay. And I think that was an option, correct? All right. So the other option is to declare the dog in question as vicious and order the city council to be served, to serve the owners requiring permanent removal of the dog from the city limits as allowed under code section 5605 or have it destroyed in a humane manner within three days. And providing evidence to the disposition of the animals. So I'd entertain either one of them motions, and we will go with the first one.
I would like to make a motion for the first one that you had read about declaring the dog in question as non-vicious with the incident documented as a first report of an unprovoked attack on record with the inclusion of installing a physical fence by the animal owner and removing the animal until that fence is in place from the city of Hampton.
Okay. Yeah, motion by Mr. Smith-Bill, Holmstrom. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr.?
That was, you quoted it non-vicious?
Correct.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hodge. Having any further discussion, I'm going to give you one more shot.
I do want to say one thing. Our police department did feel he was vicious. And I think we, we need to respect Mark's feelings or thoughts on this subject as well.
Yeah, not your time.
We can't do that.
So with that, I'm going to put this.
Barry had, excuse me, Barry had a question.
Barry, I'm sorry.
I think if it would have been a child or an adult, this would be a different situation.
True story. All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Hodge, or Mr. Holmstrom. And second by Mr. Hodge to declare the dog in question as non-vicious with the evidence documented with the first report of an unprovoked attack on record and the installation of a physical fence to the yard and have the dog removed until the fence is completed. So having that, we have a whole, it'll be a roll call vote. So we'll go around. Mr. Lamos?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Holmstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Davies?
I abstain.
That's right. Thank you. Mr. Greifey's, Mr. Greifey?
Aye.
And Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
All right, the vote of five to two with Mr. Davies stating we do have to declare the dog as non-vicious at this point with the follow-up for the owner. All right. Thank you all for coming. I know this is a tough thing.
Steve, will the dog be removed immediately tonight?
Three days, I think they have.
Three days?
Three days, yeah. We got three days to move him. I don't know how soon the fence guy comes over, but, you know, we'll work with him. Yeah. All right. We're all good. Everybody's, thank you everybody for coming, and we will move on. The next item on our agenda tonight would be.
That's fine. We're going to spend $600,000 of your money if you want to stick around and watch.
Yeah, you can watch. Watch do that.
Cody, take care.
All right. Moving on, we don't have any old business, so we'll go to new business. This is for, to set the Thursday is May 22nd, 2025 at 6:00 PM as the night date and time for a public covering, public hearing on fiscal, fiscal fiscal year 25 budget amendment. Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This, I don't have anything more to add. Just, we're setting a date for a public hearing for May 22nd, 2025 at 6:00 PM for the public hearing on the fiscal year 25 budget amendment and authorize staff to publish. Anybody have any questions?
Mayor, I just don't understand how you keep track of every little nuance of a shift of, even there's, even a couple of these were just hundreds of dollars on how you keep track of all that. I just don't understand. I mean, you, you have a system, of course, but I mean, you're going back, back to last year. And it's just amazing how you can figure that out, because I certainly couldn't.
We just, you know, we monitor what was budgeted and what's been spent to date, and then try to project what we're going to need to get to June 30th and make our best estimate.
Okay.
It's not perfect.
Well, no.
Thank you.
I couldn't do it. I mean, it's.
All right. Okay. Any other discussion? Now, I would entertain a motion to Thursday, Thursday, May 22nd, 2025 at 6:00 PM for the public hearing on fiscal year 25 budget amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Greifey, second by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is the, consider the property and liability insurance policy renewal for 2025 and 2026 with EMC through Castle Dick and Kelch Insurance. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Mayor. Tom could not be here tonight, so I'm just going to run through this. You have the sheet basically with a summary of coverages. And at the end is the premium. So this is commercial property and liability insurance, general liability, covers crime, commercial auto, inland marine, which is the major equipment, workers' compensation coverage. One thing to note is, that's helpful to this renewal, is our experience mod is .73 for workers' comp. That means there's minimal, if any, experience in workers' comp and work-related injuries, things like that. So a .73 is a very good module. And then you got commercial umbrella coverage, law enforcement liability, public officials and employment practice liability. And then also a note on that second page that EMC Insurance Company partners with Jester Insurance to create the Iowa Association of Municipal Utilities Safety Group, which we are a part of. As a partner of the group, the city has received dividend checks from IAMU. The dividend is a unique feature of the safety group program since it is a way to return money to members based on overall losses of the program. We just, we received a check a few weeks ago for $37,166. Basically, that's a return of premium. And so then at the bottom, premium breakdown, that's the breakdown for the premiums for each category. Total premium, $275,583. And this is a 2% increase over the current year, which I was pretty happy when I heard that. I was expecting more, so anyway, this is part of the claims this evening. And any questions?
I can hardly, I can hardly believe it's 2%. Our church got nailed. A lot more than that. We don't have road graders and a police department there, so that's very, very good.
I think being part of this group helps that, yeah.
Right.
All right.
I guess I'm.
Mr. Mill?
I'm sorry. It's a silly question. This is just for 2026 year, correct?
Yeah, this is for this April to next April.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I hate seeing any more. I would entertain a motion to approve the property and liability insurance policy removal, renewal for 2025 and 2026 through EMC, through Castle Dick and Kelch Insurance.
I make a motion to approve EMC policy with Castle Dick and Kelch?
Motion by Mr. Lamos, second by Mr. Holmstrom. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a consider a payment, pay estimate number seven to Henkel Construction in the amount of $165,870 for the water treatment plant improvement progress. B and K was going to be here, but I don't think that they are, so Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, thank you. So you have a cover letter from Beanster and Kim explaining that there's three original copies of pay estimate number seven. The quantities and values of work completed have been reviewed by Beanster and Kim, and payment is recommended as shown. If you turn to the fourth page of the blue, it shows in the right column, the value of the work completed is 1.705 million and less retain, a retainage of 5%, that's $85,295. The total earned less retainage is $1,620,605. And then there's a list of previously approved partial payments. And the amount due this estimate, $165,870.
Any more questions on this? This is an ongoing, ongoing bill that we keep paying, so I don't see any more other questions. I will entertain a motion to approve pay estimate number seven to the Henkel Construction in the amount that stated above for the water treatment plant improvements.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Greifey, second by Mr. Lamos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the, consider the road closure for Grand Festival. Are you with us? All right. I don't have your name, but I'll let you get it up.
Yes. I'm Addie Andrade from La Luz. I'm the associate director there. And we are just requesting the road closure for Grand Festival. It's June 7th. We are requesting from 8:00 to 10:00 PM that day. Same place as always, at the Banshell Park. I have a map attached, but you guys all know, so I don't know if there's any questions or anything.
Mr. Davies?
Yes, we were just maybe concerned about the intersections, the south intersections, that they would actually be open so the other streets that aren't closed could get through.
Okay, yeah.
I think, I think last time they angled that off so that if somebody come from the, from the west or from the east, they could go to the south.
Okay.
But the rest of your streets, you know, if we cut that, intersections, we should be fine there.
Okay.
That's something we've done before, and I don't think we've ever had an issue with that.
I think it's been fine.
So any other discussion on that item? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve the road closure request for Grand Festival. I got to say that first before I.
One question.
Go ahead.
Now, you're going to get hold of Doug when you want the barricades.
Yes, of course, yes.
Usually leave those overnight, don't they, in a pile?
I think they do, yes, yep.
So are you going to have extra restrooms or anything?
Um, yes. Well, we have Nelson Septic that's going to be dropping off, like, porta-potties and the sinks and everything, like they do every year. So, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Entertain a motion for the road closure.
So moved.
I'll move. Second?
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Mr. Hodge. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we need to pay some bills, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the claims as submitted by staff in the amount of $644,418.80.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Greifey?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Lamos. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we got a couple of ordinances and resolutions. First of all, we've got ordinance number 405. An ordinance amending the code of City of Hampton, chapter 165 for the official zoning map to rezone certain properties. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the third and final reading of ordinance 405, as the mayor stated. This is for property at the old McSweeney property, which is south of the lumberyard. And also, it also touches on the street right away, Highway 65, as well as a private drive leading back to the assisted living facility. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hearing any questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the third and final reading of ordinance 405.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Greifey?
Second.
Second by Mr. Palmer. This will be a roll, roll call vote. Mr. Holmstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Greifey?
Aye.
Mr. Lamos?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Davies?
Aye.
Ordinance is approved. Thank you. Next item is the ordinance 406. This is the ordinance amending the chapter 56 dangerous and vicious ob, animal, animals. Dogs is easier to say, so. Mr. Morrison, did you have any information on that at this point or anything new? I don't think so.
And I, I guess I could summarize this, unless, do you want me to read it in its entirety? We've all read it multiple times. Okay. So I would just answer any questions if anybody has any. Okay.
Too bad we had to do this at a vicious animal hearing.
I know it, yeah. All right, not hearing any questions.
Mayor, I do.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Palmer.
Yeah, I did look up even some dog bite laws. And the state of Iowa is much more strict than we are on a lot of this. We were talking a little bit last meeting about due process. The state code, dogs out now. It's not even questioned on the, on the state level. Even dogs running at large have to have tags on. Dogs near yard have to have tags on if the dog is six months or older. The state is not fooling around on this. There's no question on vet bills because the state says owners are liable for anything, attacks, bites, whatever. Except if you were taunting the dog. If you were taunting the dog or, you know, that sort of thing. But the state is, is a lot more strict than we are on this.
Any questions, Mr. Holmstrom? Any questions? Mr. Holmstrom?
I'll just, I'll just read this. I cannot find any reason for the justification of this ordinance. The amendment proposal. We have a system in place that has proven to be fair and justifiable to all by determining, defining, and implementing procedures should an animal be considered dangerous and vicious and a threat to our community, while at all times, keeping in mind the rights and responsibilities of being a responsive pet owner. The current ordinance has been in place and has been successfully practiced since established in 2017. We've proven that tonight, that it works. It is my belief that this drafted ordinance does nothing to benefit the citizens of Hampton. And in fact, it appears to me the only purpose is to relieve the city council of its responsibility of ensuring that the process by removing any such vicious animal from the city of Hampton is done fairly inequitably to all parties involved. And I'll tell you right now that this thing tonight was not easy. It was heartbreaking for me, and I thought about it all day long, and I'm sure the same thing for you folks. It's not easy, but it's part of our responsibilities as council members. By implementing paragraph two of this proposed amendment, directing the officer to immediately seize the animal alleged to be vicious and cause to be impounded could open up the city of Hampton to be in violation of the Fourth Amendment concerning unreasonable search and seizure. Unless the animal poses an urgent threat to public safety or if the officer does not have probable cause to be, have, I'm sorry, or if the officer does not have probable cause to believe that the suspect animal is an immediate threat to the public, this action could place the city of Hampton in violation of probable cause with resulting penalties. This is what the judges are looking for, urgent threats and probable cause. The amendment ordinance does not provide any procedural safeguards to prevent arbitrary or unjustified seizures, which would maintain a balance between individual rights and public safety as our current ordinance does. Our current ordinance does not require immediate seizure of the animal alleged to be vicious unless it is determined at the point that it is uncontrollable. It does not submit our citizens to unnecessary costs of impoundment or chip implanting. This could reach into the hundreds of dollars. The current policy states the cost of the impoundment will be from the city.
Correct.
And I, I have no problem with the chip implanting suggestion other than the fact that if the city requires it, the city should pay for it. Our current ordinance does not require officers to possibly infringe on citizens due process of seizure of their personal property. Our current ordinance does not leave the burden of determination of definitions of vicious animals solely on the officer. Our current ordinance requires active participation of the city council of the determination of a vicious animal threats to the citizens of Hampton. Our current ordinance states that if the animal is not determined to be vicious, such impoundment and quarantine costs shall be paid by the city. It also offers the appealed a hearing to be scheduled within seven days, not 14 as the amendment says. We have just proven that our current ordinance works, and I compliment the police department. You, you did this once before, and I was very impressed before I became a council member, when you investigated the situation of the gas station and its liquor license. You did the investigation, you brought your findings to the council, and the council made the decision. This is very similar in this situation. Our officer has completed the investigation, has filed his report, and brought it to the situation and attention of the council. The council heard it, we reviewed it, we made recommendations as to what action needed to be taken to protect all parties in the situation. The council then directed the officer in to take whatever actions are deemed appropriate as provided by the council, and the officer will follow the guidelines given to him as directed by the council. We have a good system in place. The current ordinance works. So why are we trying to change an ordinance that is working for our city? It maintains a good balance between individual rights and public safety. And so I submit again that I believe there is no, absolutely no reason to amend our current ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lamos?
I think the reason we wanted to streamline it was because of the lag time between the incident and when our council meetings fall. That's the only reason partly we wanted, we wanted to take care of that. And so I have a question for Ron. Has our, obviously, our city attorneys have looked at this, and what, what did they say?
She didn't, she didn't pose any concerns about a Fourth Amendment question, but she's, yeah, I mean, she was involved in this, the whole process.
And we gave her all the suggestions from the council, as well as the old ordinance and ordinances from other cities, and she kind of meshed them together and drafted them along with us, so.
So the, the cost of the vet bills, if the dog is deemed not vicious, the city's gonna have to eat that?
Under the current ordinance, yes. Under the new ordinance that was taken out, yeah. So under the new ordinance, the dog owner would be responsible for those fees.
If the dog was not vicious?
Even if the dog was not vicious.
State law says that, too.
Mr. Davies, do you have a question?
Regardless of the ordinance, like finding non-vicious, the, like Wendy could still go to small claims court.
Correct.
Against them.
Yes.
I mean, that doesn't nullify that.
No.
I don't think.
I would like to say, part of this bill of wanting to speed up this process is, was it last summer? We had a dog attack. The dog was left in the custody of the owners, and he attacked again before we had a council meeting to even have a hearing on the first one. So it is for protection of other animals and citizens. We can't keep the vicious dog in the community, a dog that has attacked. Because he attacked again before we even had a city council meeting.
Did you have something to say, Bill? I, I understand what you're saying. Is this how this works?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't want to step out of bounds here, so if I do, tell me. Yes, I, I definitely don't want a vicious animal loose either. And I think that's part of the responsibility of, and the determination of the police officer who investigates. If they determine that this party cannot control that animal, that party will be impounded, and I would not have a problem with that if the police officer determined that the property owners could not contain that animal. Pat keeps, Councilman Palmer keeps referencing the post office, and he's absolutely right. The first thing, if a mail carrier got bit or his clothes got torn, we'd go to the, we, we have to report it to the police. And if the police cannot guarantee that that, by going to the homeowner that that dog will be contained, then we block off the streets. But if the officer came to me as the postmaster and said that dog is fenced in, it's gonna be, as far as I know, that dog's gonna be contained, then we would deliver the mail as normal. And maybe not that one particular house until that situation was clarified. But that's part of the investigation. If, I would have absolutely no qualms if, if Officer Morrison said those people are elderly, and it's a big dog, they can't contain it, we're gonna have to take it in. He would have my full blessings because that was his determination that. But it, like in the case tonight, I think Officer Morrison could probably reliably say, I believe that dog can be contained until the meeting tonight. Could you, could you disagree with that statement?
I think you're correct, yes.
So I think it's a determination of the officer whether it will be contained or not, and if, if he doesn't think so, it should be impounded, and but other than that, I don't.
I just thought, a point of clarification, you know, when you say contain, I guess I would say contain again. Because if there was an incident where something happened, there evidently wasn't the control that was needed. So I guess I would say being able to contain it after the alleged incident.
And I would add, on the microchip part, on the charging, as a dog owner, have a previous dog owner. If you care about your dog, I microchip every dog I have. If you care about your dog, you're gonna do it, and it's gonna be your cost anyway. But I thought, and we did have the situation where one was left, taken out of the city, but then they snuck it back in.
It was a sister.
And guess what? Now we're back where we started, so. So I think that's a, that's a, I just think it's a thing to do if you have a dog, and it should be.
And I can say regardless of the way the reading goes tonight, I can forward any concerns you may have to our city attorney for her to review within the next, before the next reading.
My biggest concern, I'm sorry, did somebody?
That's all right.
My biggest concern, Mark, is if it's not broken, don't fix it. And the policy we have right now does not appear to be broken, and it worked. We demonstrated tonight it worked.
Mr. Palmer?
But we really didn't. We negotiated it to work. That dog, that dog gutted that other dog at, at first blush. That was vicious. Only until we negotiated that they're gonna put a fence, and I looked back at Wendy, and she said, yeah, that would be acceptable. That's when we declared it not vicious.
You know, Ron, you stop me.
No, the mayor's.
Here's where we're at with this. We go on on this all day. We know that, because we've done it.
You're right.
You know, so basically where we're at is we've got the first reading of the, the new ordinance, which some people agree with, some people don't with. Okay, so let's, let's get a motion to approve the first, first reading of the ordinance 406, and let's go from there.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Palmer. And second by Ms. Greifey.
And Mayor, if something changes between the first reading and the second or third reading.
That's why we have three. That's why we have three.
Yeah, that's why we have three readings. We'll throw it back. Not, I mean, it's not like we haven't dealt with this one.
We haven't even voted on this one yet, so.
So.
So having a motion from Mr. Palmer, second by Ms. Greifey. I'm gonna put this to a roll call vote to approve the meeting, the first reading. Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Davies?
Aye.
Mr. Holmstrom?
Nay.
Mr., Ms. Greifey?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer, or Lamos?
Aye.
Been a long, long night. All right, so the first reading of the new ordinance 406 has, is approved with a five to one count. Thank you, everybody, for your discussion, and it's very, it's very helpful as we move forward. Next, we have a resolution adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2025-07 is a resolution adopting the annual budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026. Whereas the City of Hampton, Iowa, has prepared a budget detailing expected revenues and expenditures for fiscal year '26, and notice of public hearing was advertised on April 9th, 2025, and a public hearing has been held concerning the proposed budget on this 24th day of April. Whereas the proposed fiscal year '26 budget has been reviewed by the city council. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of City of Hampton, Iowa, that the proposed budget for fiscal year '26 hereby approved and adopted, and the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to file the adopted budget with the Franklin County Auditor and the Iowa Department of Management. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Not, we'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-07.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Mr. Lamos has a motion, second by Ms. Greifey. This will be a roll call vote. Mr. Lamos?
Aye.
Mr. Davies?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Greifey?
Aye.
Mr. Holmstrom?
Aye.
And Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Resolution is passed. Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda, including approving, approving, approving the previous minutes as drafted from Thursday, April 20th, April 10th, 2025, regular session. Schedule the net regular session for Thursday, May 8th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. at the city council chambers. Approve alcohol licensing reviewing renewal for Casey's General Store, 7/19/14, Fourth Street Northeast. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second. Motion by Mr. Lamos, second by Mr. Holmstrom. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to our staff reports. Chief Morrison?
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot for tonight. I mainly was focusing on the dog stuff today, so. We did write 29 new nuisance notices in the last three days. That's in kind of a last minute push to get them to take out their stuff and take the opportunity to get the yards cleaned up and out to the cleanup this weekend and next weekend. Other than that, we've been busy with storm-related stuff, and we've been on the streets, so. If there's any questions, I'll take those.
Any questions? Mr. Lamos?
This pertains to the dog incident.
Yes.
I would like to have you contact the Andersons, and then when they get the fence put up, have you inspect it to make sure it's satisfactory.
Perfect.
Mr. Palmer?
I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but what happens if that dog dies? The Wendy's dog.
If Wendy's dog dies?
Yeah, if, if it struggles and the vet says, hey, you gotta put it down, or it just dies because of its injuries.
This is done tonight.
Okay, it's done. Okay, all right.
Any other questions for Chief Morrison? Nope. Thanks, sir. Mr. Tar?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be brief. As you know, we had the hailstorm this last week. I've been working with our insurance company and adjusters to schedule reviews of some of the damage to some of our vehicles and some of our buildings. Next Tuesday morning, I have an adjuster coming, a third-party adjuster coming in to look at the vehicles. Next Thursday, I have another adjuster that'll be coming in, and we're gonna go look at all of our city-owned buildings. They will do their assessment, and we'll see what happens from there. Citywide cleanup begins tomorrow, as Chief announced. There's been some preparation for that, and that looks good. I also had got some notices out and a municipal infraction this week. Working on staffing for part-time seasonal positions. If you know some folks looking for part-time seasonal work, please send them to City Hall. And then, you know, the guy's been working on some storm cleanup, getting ready for this citywide cleanup deal, and we had fallen trees. They've been on the intakes a little bit, trying to get those cleaned. We do gotta get up and get the jetter out, the new jetter, to get some of those cleaned up a little bit, too, so. Other than that, any questions or concerns? We are going in a lot of different directions with a lot of stuff going on.
Fair. Mr. Lamos?
Do we have some sewer problems this, today? Between Fourth Street Southeast and Third Street Southeast?
None that I'm aware of. I know, I know we did yesterday. Yesterday, we had some up in the north. That was actually between, I believe, First Street Northwest and Second Street Northwest, about the 1100 block, between 11 and 1200 there. We had a city sewer main that, at first, they thought a private citizen called morts. They came in, they excavated, thought it was gonna be their problem. Once they uncovered things, our main was actually, had a huge hole in it, and it just full of tree roots. And so we actually will be taking responsibility for that bill, and then staff will be jetting the lines and, and working in that area a little bit. But I will look into this other deal you're talking about in the southeast and give. But I will look into this other deal you're talking about in the southeast and get back to you.
Yeah. It's the 200 block. Do you have any idea what our deductible is for insurance claims?
For buildings, it's different. For each building?
It depends. It's different for buildings and vehicles.
And I believe the vehicles was 2,500, but that wasn't per vehicle.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Tar?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Mayor. Continue to work on the Bees Lake Homeowners Association sewer agreement, as well as the 2080 agreement between the city and the Iowa DNR. We are making progress. It's just that this initial agreement, part of the terminology is estimating flows. And so that's kind of what we're going through. Finalize the fiscal year '25 budget amendment. Today, I attended the North Iowa Housing Conference in Mesa City. It was well-attended. It was a good opportunity to learn more about funding options and partnerships and developments. I also had the opportunity to meet one-on-one with a couple of developers, and we're going to communicate now going forward and hopefully get them to visit the community. I received and am in the process of reviewing the final draft of the ISU Rural Housing Assessment Report, and I began a draft revision of the Airport Fuel Lease Agreement between the City of Hampton and DT Prawley that is set to renew in May of this year. Met with ISG representative regarding the pharmacy project timeline as it relates to grants that we are pursuing. And then Legal Cities has recently released a revised model for estimating city impacts of the proposed legislation. I'm in the process of reviewing the model for local impacts. And I want to welcome our new police officer, Bo Brass, who will have at a future council meeting for formal introductions. Any questions?
I'd just like to thank you for working on the budget and anything else that comes up, and trying to be frugal. You don't know what the state's going to do with rollbacks and, like, the $37,000 refund we got from insurance, anything, everything helps.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Ron, I was at the library the other day, and they did appreciate renegotiating all those interest rates. Their checks seem to be a little bit bigger on their interest this time.
Yeah.
They really appreciate that.
Great.
All right. Any further questions? Nope. Thank you, sir. Let's go over to Mr. Hodge for our council report. He's been sitting there really quiet.
I've been quiet tight. You're going to miss me when I'm gone, I'll tell you. Yeah, this is, this is one reason I'm going to get off the city council, these dog things are not easy. They're like family. Not fun to do. But it's going to be interesting next week to see how Bill Hodge voted on the closing of the streets and stuff like this, to see if I got some tinkerbell out here calling me. You know, racist, should be working in a factory where they make silk panties for women, or have three, four feminists out here screaming at me. Let's go for it.
We've been there, though, so we don't want to go back there.
Well, I hope we don't have to go back to that, but I'm going to push it.
I know. I know what you're saying.
That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Greifey?
I just, the city cleanup, eh, doesn't start tomorrow. It started today already. Everything we put in my mom's driveway is gone. I don't know where it's going to end up, but we had a chamber meeting this past Monday, and I just got to say, I'm feeling very, very positive about the Chamber of Commerce. I really do. I think we're coming around. We're turning a corner. Things are looking good, and we had a rough year, but it's going to get better. It's going to be better. I can just feel it. We had another pop-up market, a Latino pop-up market, last Saturday, and again, it was another success. I'm just thrilled for this group of people, and it's a funny atmosphere, isn't it, Carolie? It's really fun. So we're going to continue on with those and hopefully begin integrating some Anglos in with the Latinos, because that's the whole purpose of this thing, is bringing our communities together. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Thank you. I did read Carolie's letter that was forwarded to all of us, and I do have to agree, and maybe we'll put it on workshop agenda sometime. The Tree Board does a great job. There is no doubt that they do a great job. But I do think, like Carolie suggested in the letter, the city council needs to determine where some trees go, or at least get a roadmap from them on what they're going to be doing. They've inhibited a lot of the park over there, and it's a good deed. They're planting trees, and that's part of the Tree Board. But I would like to get a rundown so I know when people call me here, Carolie calls or whoever, that I have an answer of, yes, they're going to plant trees in this park, they're going to be in this area, they're going to be here, they're going to be there, and then I think that's going to work a lot better than us not knowing. So anyway, I think that if we could get a member or two, or chairman, or whoever the Tree Board to come in, that we just want to talk to them and just get our vision lined up. So anyway, that's all I've got.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Lamos?
We're all in agreement here, you know, with the animals, they're like family. I've had to put two dogs down in my adult life, and it's really stressful. These decisions aren't made easy, made lightly. I do have one question for Ron. Pat was talking about the library. Does the foundation use the same financial management company?
I don't know.
Would that be an option for them? If they're?
Well, I don't use a, I'm the manager of our funds. But the foundation does invest their own funds, and I have no, I don't even know what they are.
I just thought it'd be another way for them to make more money.
Yeah, I hope that they're obtaining the best interest rate return that they can.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Holmstrom?
Well, on a stressful day, I did have one bright moment today. And it was one of the fun tasks we have as a council, and that is nominating someone for an Image of Pride Award. And I'm not going to name names. I'll do that next month when my turn comes. But I just want to say that the looks on their faces, when I asked them if they would like to do this, I wish I could have took a picture of it. It really brightened a cloudy day. So with that said, I want everyone to know, and Mr. Mayor and city manager and all of the council members, is that even if I disagree with this particular proposal or whatever proposal that we may disagree on, I want every one of you to know that I respect the process that we're going through. And if through this process I speak out of turn or step on somebody's toes when it's not my turn, don't hesitate to call me on it. I want to learn the proper way to do this. So anyway, I do respect the process, and I thank you for listening to what I have to say.
Thank you.
Well, Pat, I agree with you, and Carolie, thanks for the letter on Memorial Park. I do think our park, or we need a park tree or a tree park plan, and maybe just a basic plan for all the parks. Just to piggyback on what Doug had said, Chamber Main Street has been working with the city, appreciate the city. I just want to thank Julie at the Chamber. She's really been coordinating all that. And I think we maxed out on, for tomorrow, we had like 44 entries or pickups to be made. And that's really good.
Only 43 now.
Now it's 43.
I'm sure.
But we were able to get the list to Doug early, because it was closed out. So again, thanks to the city for doing that. This week or so ago, I participated in a walk audit survey around the schools for Iowa State Extension sponsored that. Back to sort of the Chamber, the Chamber Main Street Design Committees were working on placement, purchasing three permanent memorial benches that are paid for by the families. And also, we had received a Barcoma grant a while back to refurbish the portable benches, and so they're working on that, too. So I'm excited about that. Just reached out to the United States Tennis Association, Missouri Valley Tennis Organization. There's a grant available. We're going to check in for like the tennis court, so maybe, you know, there's some grant money there that we can take a look at and applying for, and I'll keep you posted on that. And then finally, I certainly hope that the council's decision tonight on the hearing works out for the safety of the committee and for the community, and I certainly hope that it does work out for the Andersons and their dog. When I wrote the column for the Code Council on this topic, my intent was to write for public awareness and public safety, and I stand by what I wrote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was that Missouri Senate Tennis Association?
What's that?
Was that the Missouri Senate Tennis Association?
Missouri Senate, is that what I said? It could be.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Real quick for a report, just a couple items. I'm going to start with the negative, but it's not technically, it's not all of negative. The vicious dog is always one of the roughest things you got to do up here, and I hate it, because I love dogs. I realize that we took a while to get through that, but you know, I want to make sure everybody had a chance, and everybody stopped to peek, or champs to speak and get what they need. And I think we came to a good conclusion on that, and I'm just like anybody else, it's got to work out. If it doesn't, we got an issue. But I appreciate everybody's patience with that, to get through that. Next thing, I just looked, this has been in the paper and stuff, but these community foundations grants that came out, I'm looking at some of these amounts, you know, I mean, the Windsor Theater for a costumes room update for $2,500, City of Hampton Library, $10,000 for their outdoor project, Police Department, In-Car Computers for $7,800. It's great that we have stuff like this. We have avenues to get things paid for that we need, because we know, we all know, there's not a lot of money sometimes, and we've got our best manager of money in right here, so we do the best we can, but there's just, some of these amounts, I just go on for the food place, the bank, and the Hampton Senior, $2,500 for chairs. They need them. They wear out. So I mean, it's just great to have that resource to work with. And then the Chamber, I've heard a lot of good things about this. Jim, I know you've done a lot of work in there as the interim manager. Jerry, I know you're an extreme advocate, and you're out there doing this and pounding the pavement. But you know, that's the positivity part of it. We know we were in a bad place. We're making it better, and we need to keep moving and moving forward and keeping it positive. And that's what we got to do with everything we do up here. So that's all I got. Anybody want to go home? I entertain a motion to adjourn this regular session of the Hampton City Council.
So moved.
Second.
I'll board it.
Motion by Mr. Holmstrom, and who is the second one? Mr. Palmer? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you. [applause] The record.